was misunderstood issue. People security growth permits without any thinking that is their fault. They didn't understand the need as growth permit means you basically.
Yeah, you shouldn't.
So guys, we're gonna call the meeting to order now. Thank you. Right, so we're calling a meeting to order. I'm Aaron Julian, Chair of the Planning Board. I'm here with Paul Waleska and Cal Kerber. Planning Board members. We have two public hearings tonight. We have a shoreline zoning application. On behalf of Ralph and Ruth Reagan Realty Trust for shoreline stabilization in twelve molten beach road. And we also have an application for shoreline, a shoreline zoning application from Indian Island Company. For destruction of a boardwalk on their property at eighty Indian Point Road. So how we'll go through it just so we're on the same page. First, because there is a requirement for us to render decisions that we have a written recommendation from the Coastal Waters Commission. And Coastal Waters Commission hasn't had an opportunity to meet and issue that at that recommendation. We're not gonna make a decision tonight. We're going to have the public hearing. We're gonna take in all the information from folks here. And then we're gonna suspend the hearing at the end of the evening so that we can have an opportunity to get the written recommendation of Coastal Waters Commission. After the meet currently scheduled for December twenty third. At at the next meeting of the Planning Board will take that recommendation, which I'm assuming is there. And or it will be for us to meet again on this subject. And we'll look, we'll review that, we'll take public comment on that, and then we'll move to our discussion of. Finding the facts and conclusions of law. So tonight, we're gonna take in information, discuss it. We'll get information from the public on the applications, but we won't be making a decision. So what we'll do to move things along is we'll start first with the Reagan application. The representative of the Reagan Trust is here and will present the application, will ask questions of the applicant. Then we'll open the discussion to the public to ask questions of us or make statements to us. In connection with the application or any questions or observations on the application. And then at the end of that, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond after the that public hearing, depending on the issue we may have, we'll back and forth. On on that to clarify the issue. That's it. That's where we are. So to start, we'll we'll go ahead and open the floor to Archipelago. And and the application for the zoning or the shoreline stabilization at twelve molten beach road.
I've nothing. I'm moving to this chair.
It'd be great. So it would actually be really good for you. Anybody who's coming to speak, there's a little, is there an external?
No, she's not there anymore.
Stand over, sit over there because that way you'll be picked up all on the mic. There's little.
A foot or two. There we go.
These little machines will be able to see you. This is being broadcast live all over the universe. So. Gauge accordingly.
My my five minutes of fame. Good evening, members of the planning board. I'm Sophia King. I'm from Archipelago, representing our clients Ralph and Ruth. Reagan Realty Trust, owners of twelve molten beach road. Were requesting planning board approval for a shoreline stabilization project in accordance with section three oh eight of the town's shoreline zoning ordinance. The property lies within the island residential, again, the limited residential districts. And as many of you have known, if not have witnessed yourself, it was heavily affected by the January thousand twenty four storm over the winter along with. The entire length of the embankment, approximately fifteen feet of land was lost to erosion. This active flush erosion bluff erosion is continuing to threaten both the. Upper property and the adjacent coastal wetlands. The proposal is to stabilize roughly ninety five linear feet of unstable well through the installation of riprap. The work area is approximately six hundred and twenty square feet and is located twenty feet upland of the highest. The existing embankment is fairly steep. It's about five to eight feet high. With visibly undercutting and exposed soils, but also exposed waters. Without intervention, further loss of length is going to look scattered into that area. The stabilization design uses two to three foot angular stones, but three to five foot. Toe stone that will be buried halfway into the sediment to ensure that it's a stable structure against storm surge and wave energy. Above the riprap, we are proposing a ten by ninety five foot even dedicated buffer. This will strengthen long term stability while improving the ecological function and also trying to restore some of that natural visual character to the land. The remedication plan uses only native salt tolerant woody species and shrubs. Which is consistent with the ordinance. Construction access will occur from both land and water. Land access will use the existing right of way and grass lawn. With no need to remove any trees or woody vegetation. And then water access will rely on temporary construction mats that will be placed below the hat line. Most of this hat line below the hat line impact will be approximately one hundred and twenty square feet. And is temporary. There's no permanent altercation to the coastal wetlands. And all work is planned during lower time cycles to minimize this disturbance. The project has already been submitted. And we have obtained all required state and federal approvals, including a main D E P, you know, boat permit by rule, as well as a. U S Army Corps of Engineering of Engineers Authorization. Local review is being sought solely under the town's planning board requirements for shoreline stabilization projects. Overall, the project is designed to meet both the purpose and specific standards of section three oh eight. Access is located on stable soils. It's using existing disturbed areas. Minimizing removal of vegetation. The riprap is the minimum size and extent needed to stabilize the bluff. And is consistent with other shoreline treatments on the island. The project avoids impacted fisheries, coastal wetlands, and to the public's ability to pass through the intertidal zone as all permanent work. Is located upland of the brown boundary. The ordinance also encourages remediation beyond what is removed. And in this case, we are significantly increasing the amount of native vegetation on site. Where approximately two hundred and forty square feet will be temporarily disturbed by equipment. The applicant is then restoring that area plus an additional nine hundred and fifty square feet with the new native buffer. Is all right. This project represents a necessary environmentally responsible response to significant storm damage. It prevents continued land loss, protects the upland area and as well restores natural vegetation. While meeting all local, state, and federal regulatory requirements. And with that, I would like to leave you with your time consideration of this product and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Paul, question?
Yeah, Paul, why don't you start?
Thank you. According to the tax map, the property owner has one hundred and twenty five feet of fundage. Your project descriptions address ninety five feet of shoreline stabilization. Is that accurate?
That ninety five linear feet is accurate and the one hundred and twenty five shoreline, if that is on the property card, should be exactly like that.
Part of the reason I ask is that many similar projects. Is it a well known concern about the wraparound effect or the end potential end damage associated with the stabilization projects? I see one slight reference to it in here, but has your project taken into consideration that type of effect?
With the water rushing in to the sides. Based on the engineering, I think. I mean, how do you refer to it? Might there be a little more specification on that? Sure.
Yeah, I'd be happy. You want me to jump up here?
Please, that would be very good. Thank you.
Sure.
So the question is.
Why don't you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Very good. My name is Mike Morris, also from Archipelago. I'm here on behalf of the Reagan Family Trust Project. So the question is regarding the end effect erosion idea that's that's, you know, present in some cases, not so much in other cases. And the expectation that riprap or shoreline stabilization projects be designed to try to avoid that from from occurring. You know, in any particular location. So the design here is intended to. I should say this, the end effect erosion is primarily directed at not passing on some erosion. Issues onto a neighboring property. That's the that's the bigger crux of that 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 piece. So on on the one end, where we're not going up to the property line, I think we're about thirty thirty feet back from the property line. We're gonna tie the riprap in with sort of short return into the embankment. And and then just watch and keep an eye on on the riprap or the soil erosion further beyond that. It is on the applicant's property. We expect it to continue to erode. But we we're not anticipating the way of the way the riprap will be tied into the embankment. It won't be just a, you know, ninety degree angle, sharp, steep curve. It'll be a gentle curve and tapering down towards the end. To help reduce any potential end effect erosion. And that's, you know, subtly end, that's also gonna be the approach as well. It's gonna be tapered and then it'll be a minimum five feet away from. From the neighboring property line. So.
Thank you. Sophia, you mentioned engineering or engineering designer view. Is there a professional engineer's overview of this project as part of the study?
There is. It was project was designed by Chad Strader.
No, it's probably gone by Chad Strader. Is he a P E?
No, just to just to clarify, the the regulations do not require such projects to be designed by a professional engineer.
My word was reviewed by.
Right, or there's no requirement for it to be reviewed by either.
I think it's part of our local ordinance as it currently stands.
Then maybe for the.
Been changed.
Shoreland for the work in the shoreline zone, I think that's a requirement.
I took question.
Which is which would be the temporary work, I think, right?
It it has not been designed by a by a P E or reviewed by a P E in this case. And if if there is an ordinance requirement to that effect for this this review of them. They must for missing.
In in our ordinance, I believe it has been changed a number of times and there is intent for discussion. To modify it again. So it's not clearly, folks, I recognize that. It was really just a question of that.
Right, yeah, I mean, so as my recollection, I'll turn to our C E O over there, Paul Demmer. But my recollection was that for the actual structure itself, there was no requirement. That it be licensed by a professional engineer. However, for work in the shoreline, for the, and I'm not not sure I know, but the.
You as you as the board have the authority to request a third party. Review by a professional engineer.
But but it's not, let's just go back a second. Is it required? I don't think it's required that the structure, right? So but I think that the work in the submerged lands areas does require a professional engineer. And I think that's the that's the area that we're that in specifically, I I don't know about. I I mean, one of the questions, but there's a temporary work here. If that's in the submerged lands where the mats are going. I think that would require a separate professional engineer and a separate application for that work, right?
Think that would all fall under the same application.
But.
And it's associated work and it's incidental. I don't wanna say incidental.
But if there was a requirement for that work in that zone, for instance, and I apologize. In the case of the work on the two projects we had legging out a bomb a few months ago. Was there another application that had to be filed for work in the submerged lands area?
They did a flood, they did a flood permit.
That's it. That was what I was looking for.
And the flood permit.
So.
Yes.
So I think of you, they would have, these guys would have to, assuming they were approved for this application. Would they have to submit a flood plain application, permit application to you, and that would require a professional engineering.
Correct.
Stamp of some kind, I believe.
Thanks for the clarification.
But I'm and the only thing I would caveat that was would be that. If it is temp temporary work and it is mass and and done in a. Good engineering practice manner, I'm not sure about the temporary work. I know the any permanent activity.
Oh, okay. So that's something that you'd have to follow up on afterwards and.
I'm happy to happen to do that and get a give you an official statement one way or another before your next meeting.
In terms of paperwork, have we received the shoreline zone application?
Yes, you have.
You have. Then. One of the questions I have, looking at your photographs and the drawings itself. You make reference in here to. H A T, your highest astronomical tide, elevation of six point nine feet. How was that actually physically determined at the site inclusion?
We we go out and we survey using the the grid level. And we will determine it based off of our own survey. So it will be more accurate than some that we can get offline. It'll be more accurate to that specific site.
Thank you.
It's it's an elevation based on the predicted tide for today, a high tide, low tide.
No, but I just wondered how it was physically determined at the site.
Sure.
Okay. The last thing I'd like to ask is, are you aware of the recent direction by this town when the resolution passed by the selectmen? To address the shift and change at the D E P with regard to nature based solutions?
I'll answer that. We're we're we are aware of that, I guess, that little pivot or pivot here at the foundation of the island. Similarly, it has done that regulatory pivot at the state level. Well, changing this to the regulations. And even with the D E P, this is this has been approved by the D E P already. Or our structural stabilization method because of the type of area that it is that it falls into. The nature based solutions are not not needing to be effective here.
And I said, all I was gonna ask was if you were aware of that, as I've been from you here. And if it was appropriate in this case, okay, and you responded to that as well.
Sure. Thanks.
I just a few other questions. So we have in your application. The planning E B R, and by permit by rule, permit. But we didn't get the application that you submitted on that, right?
Correct.
And I asked that because we have a permit by rule. That says it's permitted, but I don't know what it ties to.
Like as you as you asked, as you mentioned that, I I thought, oh, I I know where he's going with this.
Right, so I mean, I'm I'm assuming it's this project, but I don't know that it's this project.
Sure. Would you like us to provide that for the next meeting?
Yes, I think that would be helpful to to make a copy of whatever it is you submitted to the. State available so we can see what actually got permitted.
Would you like the same or the Army Corps?
That that would be great, anything, because these are because of the nature of the just the just, yeah, approved. As opposed to the other D E P letters that we've gotten in the last round where it's very specific about what happened. This is just.
Right.
Done. The. So there's one, that's two of them. There was one statement in the letter from. The Army Corps of Engineer, the email from the Army Corps of Engineer that I didn't understand. They said it doesn't matter. They said the high tide line is not consistent with what they're looking at. What does that mean?
Yeah, it's a good question. The Army Corps of Engineers uses a different elevation datum to establish what is the upper edge of the coastal island. And theirs is the mean high tide. And in some cases, they'll use the highest annual tide, depending on. The project, depending on the project manager, probably more than anything. And so the highest astronomical tide is just, you know, a little higher than all of those. So they accept. The use of the highest astronomical tide because it's more certain than what they want.
Okay, so it's a, in other words, it doesn't, it's a. Doesn't matter because in any case, it's above the most restrictive line.
Yes.
That they would get.
D E P requires the highest astronomical tide. The town requires highest annual tide, which is lower. And the Army Corps, again, highest annual or median tide. So they just provide the highest, most strictly, right, right out of.
Those are all the questions I have. So I'm gonna take a seat and we'll at this point, open the floor to any members of the public who'd like to speak to. The application.
Thank you, by the way. Yeah, perfect. I'm Mark Lickus. The wife and I own property on South End from the Reagans, Reagan property. We actually don't have, but I'm not sure what information. You have that property in the area that. Molten Beach Road runs down and it's actually. Split into, there's ownership, you know. The Reagan's own app and there's another owner that owns a strip through there and then our property starts. So I guess what I want to speak to is you talked about the South End. And I appreciate the question you had about the taper and so is it is it a blur? My main concern is about, you know, potential negative effects to off site. I told you with Jim Reagan about this a little bit, but it's sounds like. You sort of need to get it on the record. So. So I appreciate you asking about that. And I guess. My comment would be that in terms of the design and the construction, the plans are a little bit. Not very specific to be perfectly honest about the details there. And so I guess when it comes to time for construction, you know, my question would be. That there be, is it, you know, is there a kind of coordination between. You've done the design and contract, we're actually designing this, but. Between you and the contractor and property owner. And our code of proportion, things like that. I'd be curious to know a little more about what that process is. And. I guess that's that's it.
Right.
Thank you. Any other comments? So I would actually like to pick up on that. And I did, I I was curious about that. And I compared in my mind, as I was looking at your discussion of taper with other drawings we've seen of other. Other shoreline stabilization projects, which had more information about the tapering. Impact or not the impact, but the tapering of the of the stabilization project and I, it says on the. On the drawing, it says there's a two foot taper into the wall. Into the right of way. But it doesn't indicate exactly what that that taper is.
Okay. I'm happy to answer that now or?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, why don't why don't you pop up here and?
Sure. I just wanna step out of turn here. So again, Mike Morris from Archipelago, here on behalf of the Reagan Realty Trust. Question of, again, I think relates to this end effect erosion question, I'm gonna put a little bit this way as well. So this this tapering, we're we're happy to provide a little more detail on a on the plan before the next meeting, if that would be helpful. But it's it's basically starting at a height, the southerly end of the property, of six to seven feet in height. And it's gonna be tapering down to approximately two feet by the time you get down towards the end of the. The end of the riprap project as the southern, southerly term is of the of the project, I guess. One one note I just wanna make regarding the end effect erosion issue with related to riprap is. Typically, this is something that we see in an area where there's a lot of velocity current found in a river and system. So for ripping wrapping a river embankment or something like. So if we're ripping wrapping a, uh, a river embankment or something like that, um, particularly if you're using like a vertical wall, concrete reinforced, uh, rebar reinforced wall or something like that. I think it's, you know, pretty logical to most of us that, you know, you, you would expect as the current hits that with the water velocity hits that, that there'll, there's no roughening surface of that type of wall, um, in a river, river environment. And it's just going to deflect that velocity or that energy of the water somewhere else, um, further downstream. Depending on the situation, it's going to go one way or another. Well, we have velocities here in the, in the ocean as well as the tides shift, um, not to the extreme that we find in a riverine system, but there is, there is some velocity. Um, and then you compound that with a, you know, a big major coastal storm like we had in, uh, January twenty twenty four. Uh, some prior to that, it, it could recreate more velocity wave energy. And so that's the purpose behind the taper, uh, the particularly the southerly end, but also in the northerly end, um, that that, that like a landowners don't really want to encourage any or promote any additional soil erosion on their own property. Uh, the other thing I wanted to just point out is if, if we look at the pictures of the application, um, particularly the, I think it's page two of the photos in the application. If you look at the surface of the soil that's there today, um, the existing conditions, uh, basically it's this, it's this smooth bare soil or roded soil surface. And what I think is sometimes lost when we're starting to talk about end effect erosion or riprap is the riprap, the roughened surface, it's, it's large irregular shaped boulders and rock that will actually help, and it's on a slope so that it's actually intended to dissipate or reduce the, um, wave energy, um, as waves and current hit that, hits that riprap. If, if we do nothing and we left the site just as it is today, there is nothing there and there's no roughness to that soil that, that will reduce any wave energy uh, or velocity coming off of the property. So, you know, you have a wave that comes in and it may do some more erosion on the property, but it's such a smooth hardened, or not hardened, but smooth, uh, flat base that it's just going to deflect the wave energy that way. So riprap is, it's not going to be a vertical faced wall, smooth faced wall. It's going to be a, a sloped, um, riprap, uh, irregular shaped rock and boulder, uh, to help attenuate some of that wave energy. So I think sometimes riprap gets a little bit of a bad rap, uh, with respect to end effect erosion. Uh, but anyway, that's, I'll leave it at that. Sure.
You raised a few points here, and if I could ask the follow-up questions relating to it. Have you seen any photographs or videos of the storm damage that actually deteriorated this painting? And if so, if you take that into consideration, the magnitude of those waves in design of this?
Yeah, good question. I, I have not seen any videos of this particular property.
A lot of videos that I took from that location looking down the beach. And, um, I think you'd be amazed at the size of the waves, right, damage. And my understanding of what you're trying to say with respect to end effect erosion, correct me if I'm wrong, was the assumption that everything is, uh, at ninety degrees to the shoreline. Okay. And that the riprap does a very effective way of knocking down the damage or the energy in the way. I think it's highly unlikely through a tide cycle and wind and storm damage for anything to continue to occur at ninety degrees. You are going to have an offset. And the moment you do the one side or the other, you will be from one side or the other. Okay. That's just personal observation.
Okay. Thanks.
And I'm glad to send you the video if you wish to see the magnitude.
I'm sure I want to see that.
I, I don't think you do.
But I would, I would welcome, however.
I mean, thank you.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm Stephanie Miss. Oh, my, um, husband and I own land, uh, probably, uh, close to the Reagan's. I just wanted clarification, please, on the natives that you're going to use the plantings and how you'll monitor the success of whatever you're growing.
Thank you.
We did bring, the P requires.
So it'd be great if you could come up here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, D P provides a plenty of permits. So we did provide some specific species. The ones we're going to build and use on this site are going to be bayberry, seafoam goldenrod, Virginia rose, sweet fern, and also common juniper. Uh, so more of what do you need to prepare yourself for? And, um, we, we have a whole planting area. Do you have any other question? Just curious, like how will you monitor?
I would add to direct questions to, to the board so that we don't end up having, uh, conversation or.
How they'll monitor the success of those plants.
So how are you?
So there will be a, for the whole site, it'll be monitoring of, uh, soil stabilization and including the vegetation. It will be monitored until it's considered stable. Uh, and that'll just be based on visual monitoring.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments?
But it's just like, just wondering, how do you, until it's determined to be stable, seems kind of vague.
Sure. Uh, very good question. Uh, so I guess I would summarize it this way. Um, there, the, we're going to contend the plant, the, the species within a replanted box area, the thought of the slogan. Um, and they're going to monitor those just to ensure that they stay alive, basically. Um, the last thing they want to do is pay a lot of money for vegetation and watch it die away. Um, and then be looking at a bunch of dead vegetation in front. So they're going to make sure that it's adequately watered if we're in a summer like we just had to ensure surviv- survivability. We, we don't have any survivability clause, like we're going to monitor three years or five years or something like you might have if, if you had a uh, replanting associated with a violation, cutting, or something. Uh, but we could include a provision that gets monitored for two years or three years. If that's a desire of the board.
Okay.
I think they're going to monitor it anyhow, just to make sure it survives.
Any other questions from the audience? All right, so we'll, uh, suspend this public hearing for now, uh, to our next meeting that we take this event. And in the meanwhile, we'll move to open a public hearing on the application from Indian Island Company for the construction of a board one. And, uh, with Flycatcher, please move forward with the application.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Tim Forrester with Flycatcher. Environmental consultant, environmental scientist, and a certified ecological restoration practitioner. Uh, so, well, um. So here on behalf of the applicants, and this is, as everybody knows, it's out on the hook. Uh, where there used to be a road, there used to be a parking lot, and now neither one are there. Uh, there's, there's some little remains of, of the road. Um, and now somewhat that they trampled down footpath that devalizes a portion of the road. Um, and also cuts into new areas that were previously all vegetated, um, but really the only way to get from point A to point B to get the access road down. Uh, so we worked with the property owners that come up with a plan on how to maintain public access, private access to the beach. Um, and, and have it safe and outside of the, uh, immediate danger zone, if you will. So we developed a wooden board block. It's a permanent board block that will start, um, you know, well, you can see on the plans, it starts before the section of road that is now roded. Uh, there's actually a lot of ledge that fallen on the seaboard side. So we're sort of back in behind that. We felt like that was a, at a higher elevation, a little more protective. And then from there, um, we laid out the, the board block to go through the woods. It is all wetland through there. Um, and it stays out of the roadmap of the P one coastal sand dune area until it gets to the very end. Um, and then in that area, the last three sections of board block would simply be temporary. And in those, that's part of the state's permitting process that you, you couldn't build this in a coastal front over the move, um, permanently. So we, we've worked out a way to make it meet that, meet the state's criteria. Um, the overall system is, is pretty standard. If you've been to any, any land trust, any board block that crosses a coast, that crosses a wetland, um, pretty pretty standard methodologies. You're driving in two-inch galvanized pipe, uh, and then you have stringers that run across, you have caps that run across and connect the pipes, stringers that sit on top and decking off of that. So the whole thing's elevated up off of the bottom. Um, the wetland area that it will meander through, there's a substantial amount of poison ivy in there. There's also, um, quite a bit of large, healthy, uh, really beautiful bayberry. So the exact layout of this, for if you've driven in the field, there will be a little bit of meandering to it along the proposed path. But the starting points and ending points will be the same. It will stay out of the dune because it's laid out. Uh, but we want to avoid those healthy maturity buried plants if we can. Um, so that'll, that'll help reduce vegetation removal for the project. Um, there's also a little bit of signage proposed on both ends. Um, the signs aren't drafted yet, but the intent is to direct foot traffic, um, onto the boardwalk and keep people off of what remains of the old blockway. Uh, eventually there'll be some additional plantings that we hope to, to install in there to not only help fortify that disturbed area, but also discourage additional foot traffic in there and allow the most natural vegetation that can in the area. So we set it to the storm surge, um, but if the, if the butcher was not there, it's a, we're in a better, better circumstance. Um, this did require a permit from D E P. Uh, it's a little complicated as to why it needed one, but it's, it's in the flood zone. It is a coastal wetland. So the impact of coastal wetland is a wetland, especially if, once again. So that triggers, uh, D P's permitting review, uh, does actually requires a full N R P A permit, but because the impacts are somewhat minimal, D P has the jurisdiction way down to a tier. So this was a tier one application to D E P, uh, which was, was approved. Uh, there is no water compatible with water. So the Army Corps didn't take too much interest in this one. Um, I think that's over the short, short of the real project. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Paul, you have any questions? No, you, you did so well last time. Um.
Tim, on your drawings, uh, and everything in your description says this entire project is above highest astronomical tide.
Right.
And it's shown over here in your legend. All right. But can you help me understand which line it is? I see.
Sure.
Yeah, I see mean high water shows up very clearly.
Yeah. So there's two lines. There's a blue line here and then there's the darker line.
So it's the dark solid. So that's the highest. So even though it shows that way as a broken line, correct, it's on.
Yeah, it's, it's a line featuring a cap. When you go from model space to paper space, it sometimes does that.
Okay, so I couldn't tell by color, but your H A T depiction is this line.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No. I, it's, it's true. Is this, do you guys consider they must need to like bring stuff to the boat outs and, you know, how are they doing that now? Is this going to accommodate that?
Um, so it's, it's a multi-purpose project. Uh, it's, it's for public access as well as bringing it over to the property.
Yeah.
Um, anything large scale would probably come in by the dock, um, on the other end. Um, this is a, a footpath. Uh, it, it will be four feet wide. It can accommodate, uh, handicap accessibility. Uh, but there's no, you know, it's not supposed to be for light or anything like that. It's a pedestrian access. So if they want to get stuff from point A to point B, they're going to have to carry. One thing I did talk about, if it matters, was just on the installation of this. Um, getting materials to and from the site and when the work needs to happen. Um, the intent is to bring everything over on the barge and then offload it and then drive it around to the roads so that all material is right here at the beginning. Um, so then as they work, they can work their way out of the boardwalk and that'll reduce, uh, additional impacts of the site. When there's also some limitations, um, mostly by choice, those piping plovers, um, will be in utilizing this area. There were successful nests this year. So, uh, we want to be out of there and completed with the project in April before the birds return. So, or, yeah, hopeful that we can move this along as quickly as possible. Clover use is actually adjacent to this, not within our proposed area, but anything you can do to reduce disturbance is about that.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Great. Open it up to members of the public. Would anybody like to speak to this application? All right, let me just start with the members of the public. Yeah. Any members of the public?
That now, obviously, obviously, Indian Island money, which is the landowner. I just wanted to observe, there's something there I think you all know, that the actual sponsor of this project and the lead of this effort is the Indian County Land Trust, who has done an extraordinary job of figuring out how to do it immobilize and support. And I just thought that the record ought to include that acknowledgement.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have any comments? All right, uh, Paul, sorry.
Uh, yeah, uh, Paul DeMaris, Code Enforcement Officer. Um, Tim, just a quick question on the three temporary sections. Will those be installed annually and removed annually? And are there dates for that?
So the last three sections, because they are in a frontal view, um, they, they can't be permanent structures. So those will simply come off of the permanent ends and, uh, they'll just rest on a, on a six by six. So they'll just be laid down in place, put together to one another, uh, but they won't be pipes driven into the ground to support. And then, uh, the definition of temporary is in place, in place and functioning for the rest of the seven months of the year. So it will be up to the landowner to remove those in order to be compliant with the D E P. Um, they're, they're short sections. They, you can simply pick them up and relocate them, carry them to store them in another location.
Good. I, I mean, I just wanted to know
Yeah.
in relative terms, that temporary, the seven months I, I get, that makes sense. So.
Yeah.
Uh, good, but they would have to be removed and
Yes.
stored somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sit, Paul. Yeah, you can.
That's okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, so we'll suspend this, uh, public hearing to our next meeting and take it from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I guess, uh, is there any, uh, public, uh, other planning board business not on the agenda? Anything? Given me, I don't have anything. Uh, public comment and any items not on the agenda, a maximum of five minutes per item. Hearing none. Uh, we'll set the next meeting date. Next meeting date should be the second Monday in January. That's January twelfth, right? Because I just all from earlier.
Double check.
So that's when we'll plan to get together, then get to, uh, pick this up. And, uh, with that, are we good to adjourn? But, oh, hold on.
I just, I just want to make sure that the three of you do have copies of the, um, the work that was done by, um, uh, Judy, uh, from, for the shoreline zoning mapping.
Yeah.
And have the, uh, the ability to review.
Yeah, we have the link, uh, and I started looking at that. We started looking at that. So we'll pick that up and, and there's probably the January, yeah. Probably January, we'll pick that up along with a lot of other items that we need to start moving through for, uh, consideration for modification of ordinances. for modification of ordinances.
Right. And in, in that regard, if you do have questions as you start to review that, please don't hesitate to reach out. I mean, I've spent some significant time going, I've seen places on the island I didn't know existed. So I, I mean, I haven't been on here long enough to see, but there was, the, the way that map is set up, I think Judy did a nice job of defining it. So if you have that break line in the middle, you're seeing before and after pictures. Yeah, so I, I mean, I think it's, it's pretty easy to follow anyway, at least for me. And if you have questions, please don't hesitate. Uh, and again, on, on that same regard, I would encourage you, if you need another, the new copy of the uh, D E P's kind of hit list of items that.
Yeah, I think I've got it. Thanks.
Okay.
But move on to our, I'm sure.
All right. Anything, anything I can do to help you guys, uh, just let me know.
Okey doke. Anything else? Oh.
Just a question about this suspension. I, I just, I'm not familiar with the process enough to know.
So we're not closing off the public hearing yet. We're leaving it open. And so at the next meeting, we'll take up uh, uh, certain items such as specifically the uh, we'll consider the Coastal Waters Commission recommendation for each of the projects. It sounds like we'll also take, you know, we'll also have some other documents coming in on this project. We'll take a look at, and I don't know if a lot of questions on them, but at least we'll have them. Um, but that's what we'll have in front of us, and there'll be an opportunity for the public to comment on us. Anything new in the record?
Typically, the coastal waters step is completed prior to this meeting, this public hearing. But because of scheduling issues, they weren't able to get together.
So you did that before the next meeting?
Right.
And then the next meeting is?
Our next meeting is January twelfth and Coastal Waters meets on the twenty third of December.
And so the next meeting is taking information and making a decision or?
Uh, yes, yeah. Typically, it'll be finding the fact conclusions of law, um, uh, at that meeting.
All right.
Thank you. Exactly. Finding the fact conclusion as well. Making a decision. Official way of saying.
Just the clarifying statement. So the information, once Coastal Waters makes a decision, we will forward that information to the planning board. So the planning board will have that information ahead of time. So they're not gonna be receiving brand new information the day of the meeting, you know, and then be put in a position of having to make the decision. They'll have that information ahead of time.
And I'm assuming it will be.
Put it online once it becomes available.
Are, are we guaranteed that that meeting's gonna take place on the twenty third?
I can't guarantee.
We have a deadline.
Anything. I, I can't, I mean, I think they're scheduled to meet then. Um, but it's a volunteer group of, of people. I think they're trying to meet then. There's certain requirements they have to make for notice and, and make sure that certain people are available. And that's when they're intending to meet, my, I have faith that they will meet uh, at, at that time. But, you, you know, if they don't, if they're not able to, I'm sure they'll meet at the next available time they can. And if, and we'll take it from there. So, yeah.
And I don't know if it's appropriate or could be helpful in any way. There was a question asked about procedure and how this goes step by step. Um, so once the planning board has completed their process and have reviewed and theoretically on January twelfth, if everything goes smoothly, they would approve the project. Then the applicants would both be applying for, or receiving a permit through my office that would then trigger uh, an initial meeting probably onsite with their contractor and myself and the two designers to make sure that everybody's all on the same page as we're standing there looking at it. And that also, the work that will be done has to be done by certified uh, D E P certified shoreline uh, contractors. So people who have been trained in the process and understand the, the limitations and needs on, on the shoreline. So I'll meet with those folks and the designers and their contractor, kind of get a scope of when, what their schedule is going to be like. I'm only on the island one day a week. The limitations are that I'm gonna go there on, most every Wednesday, I'm, I've been at the Nada Bomb project is one that's ongoing right now that the board reviewed earlier this year. I try to get there and make sure I'm at least seeing a progress report, taking a few pictures so that I know what's going on there. If there are questions, there is supposed to be, and uh, especially with the stabilization projects, there is supposed to be a uh, certified person on site daily during those projects. And uh, those folks should be in communication with me in theory if there's a problem. The board also has the ability to impose the uh, requirement for a third party person to monitor beyond just because of my limitations here being one day a week. They could have someone uh, added to the process here that gives uh, a review of, of those sites. Not happened in the past, but again, depending on a project, it may be something that is ears to their consideration. And if, if, and then as to kind of closing out the project and finishing, uh, when is it complete? And are they stable? Who's monitored? Again, I'll see the work done with the stone and everything, and then with the vegetation planted. And certainly get a phone call and, and invite out there to make sure that we're seeing the vegetation that's called out in the plan. And then the monitoring of that is, is pretty difficult in, in the sense that you're going out there, the owners certainly have a vested interest in keeping the vegetation alive. Uh, it isn't, again, a bad summer. It, it's not always possible, but it would make sense that those items that are called out would be replaced if they die.
Thank you, Paul.
If you ask one question?
Yeah.
All the applicant on the hook talked about a very narrow timeline for execution of this project. I think it was, because the words, if I can explain.
Yeah.
Um, because all, I think he mentioned all of their materials are gonna be received over the road and staged well upland on their own property. Is there anything that prevents the applicant, certainly at risk, from staging ma- materials ahead of receiving the permit so that they could be prepared, given barge schedules, weather and everything else to start the work if and when the, the final permit is received?
To, to be fair to that question, I had that exact uh, request of um, the Nada Bomb project, and I said I can't approve.
But that one was coming by water and being received on the beach below H A T. This one, I believe he said, is coming over by truck and being received on the road. Okay?
And if you stored it off in the upland area, um, and it's on their own property, still on a trailer or something, or, you know, whatever. I, I, again, I don't.
I said, recognizing there's an element of risk, but could one stage construction materials prior to the start of?
I wouldn't have a problem with, I mean, the volume is, is pretty, pretty minimal. I mean, you're not talking, you know, trailer trucks full of stuff here. But.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Right, well, uh, if, if we move to adjourners.
If you want that motion, I'd like to make it.
I think we're adjourned. And then Kyle, second, sorry, someone in the favor. You're adjourned. Thank you very much.